Everyone, welcome to our county council meeting. First item for tonight is a public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a second public hearing on Tuesday, February 27, 2024 regarding proposed amendments to the Charleston County Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So tonight I will be giving an update on the proposed amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. I first wanted to highlight our public engagement process for these proposed amendments. Here you can see a timeline of the 10 public meetings that have been held to date concerning the ordinance amendments culminating in tonight's public hearing. At the request of county council, staff held two community workshops in December of last year. The meeting turnout was great with almost 90 citizens attending. The format of the workshops allowed staff to present a summary of the amendments to the ordinance while leaving plenty of time for a question and answer period from the attendees. Meeting notifications also provided instructions for sending in questions in advance of the meeting, but none were received. Staff always makes themselves available to meet with citizens about any of their concerns, and we held six small group and individual meetings to answer questions and provide more information about the proposed amendments, and you can see those here. Throughout the process, over 6,500 notifications have been sent out in advance of the public meetings, along with advertising in the newspaper for each meeting as well. Now I'm going to summarize the proposed amendments. So last year, the Historic Preservation Commission requested guidance on restructuring the approval criteria for certificates of historic appropriateness in order to help guide decision-making. When reviewing the ordinance, the following additional changes were identified. One, remove the ability for the commission to nominate historic properties and districts. Two, update application requirements for all application types. Three, clarify the process for removing individual properties from historic districts. Four, create a process for certain certificates of historic appropriateness to be reviewed at the staff level. Five, update the requirements for demolition and clearing and grubbing requests. Six, add language regarding emergency permits and ordinary maintenance of property. Seven, require Board of Zoning Appeals approval prior to the HPC review as applicable. Eight, create an opportunity for conceptual plan workshops and also encourage community workshops. Nine, remove subdivision plat application approval from the HPC's purview because state law places the authority of subdivision regulation under the powers and duties of the Planning Commission. Ten, clarify the list of exemptions for certain certificates of historic appropriateness and also simplify the approval criteria. Eleven, simplify the process for modifications to approved certificates of historic appropriateness. Twelve, create a process to amend designated historic properties and districts to identify contributing resources, area character appraisals, and other supporting documentation. Thirteen, add posted notice requirements for certain application types. Fourteen, update the definition section. And lastly, we did make clerical amendments throughout. In addition to these amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance, an amendment to the fee ordinance is also proposed in order to include a fee for processing applications to amend historic properties and districts. The following amendments to the ZLDR are also being proposed to complement the changes being suggested in the Historic Preservation Ordinance. So within Chapter 3, Development Regulations, remove historic preservation applications from Table 3.1.6, and require Board of Zoning Appeals decisions prior to the HPC decisions as applicable. Also, require site plans to be in an approvable state prior to placement on an HPC agenda. Additionally, in Chapter 8, Subdivision Regulations, remove all references to subdivision plats requiring certificate of historic appropriateness approvals. So now we will share the public input that we've garnered throughout this process. So we received letters from citizens in advance of the various public meetings. Seventy-two letters in opposition to the subdivision-related changes were received. Additionally, after the public workshops were held in December, four letters with suggestions for changes to the ordinance were received by staff. We also had 26 speakers attend the public meetings in person to voice their opinions on the proposed amendments. The majority of these comments specifically referenced the subdivision, proposed subdivision changes. As previously mentioned, during the December community workshops, staff explained the proposed amendments to the ordinance in detail and then opened up the floor to the public. The following slides will illustrate the comment themes that were discussed during those question-and-answer periods. So during the December 6th community workshop, many citizens expressed concern about removing the subdivision regulations from the ordinance. There was also a robust discussion about the current approval criteria for designation and CHA applications. Several citizens questioned the reason behind why the amendments were being proposed. There was also a conversation about what public input had been received to date. Clearcutting properties was a concern that was mentioned repeatedly, along with worries about the allowed densities within settlement areas. So at the December 13th community workshop, staff heard several of the same issues that were expressed at the December 6th meeting, including the removal of the subdivision regulations and concerns about clearing of land. Citizens also expressed concern about the impact on heiress property and the timeline of adoption for overlay zoning districts and area character appraisals. So after those community workshops, like I mentioned earlier, four letters with suggestions for the ordinance amendments were received. So this slide shows the feedback that has been received. Feedback in bold green text are items that staff believes are already addressed in the ordinance. Feedback shown in bold orange text are items that staff felt could be incorporated into the ordinance amendments or addressed immediately outside of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. All right, so throughout the process, staff heard many concerns outside of the purview of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, some of which are listed at the top of this slide. The following four new amendments address concerns expressed by members of the public. First, staff has added language addressing demolition by neglect. Second, staff has proposed requiring certificates of historic appropriateness for clearing and grubbing applications for one acre or more in size regardless of the presence of contributing resources on the subject property. Third, staff has added the term "cultural cohesiveness" into the definition of historic district. And lastly, this is a change that is not part of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, but applications for subdivisions on historic properties or within historic districts will now be reviewed by the Planning Commission. In advance of tonight's public hearing, we did receive two petitions stating general opposition to the proposed amendments that had a total of 127 signatures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily.
Ready? We have 27 people in total that signed up, but we have 16 that are here to speak. The first person is Pearl Askew, followed by Craig Askew, and then Elizabeth Singleton.
Pearl Askew, 977 Gastonville Road, Allendale, South Carolina. We appreciate all the work that was done by staff and the council persons hearing our concerns. Based on what we've just said, the fact that the number four option is being removed from the HPC commissions has weakened the ordinance in regards to helping to protect the settlement communities. We need all the protection that we can get based on the fact that our neighboring town has moratoriums on certain buildings. So we are being inundated with more building in our communities that cannot really take the pressure of it. The drainage is so poor until we are actually floating down, we'll be in the Atlantic River. We had a meeting with SDOT and county council, but we have not seen the results from this, especially removing the trees. Our newcomers will not, clearing, grubbing, our newcomers will not be able to enjoy the same conditions that we were used to when they come to our communities. We are not against development, but it has to be done decently and in order. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Askew, Elizabeth Singleton, Sam Spence.
I have 30 seconds. Thank you. I'm sorry. Would everybody who is in agreeance with what was just said, would you please stand?
We are preserving the settlement community, not only Ten Mile, but the 24 settlement communities in Charleston County, 24, 26 settlement communities. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Craig Askew, Elizabeth Singleton, Sam Spence, Anthony Bryant.
I'm Elizabeth Singleton, 1833 North Gromble Road in Charleston. I too live in a settlement community. I see that when you start making changes, to one, it affects us all. You start picking a little piece at a time, then you go back later on and say, well, we did this in that community, so why can't you accept what's going on in yours? My thing is, no, do not make those changes. You're affecting too many of us, thousands of us. Charleston County is 100 miles long. You're talking about from McLennanville all the way to Eddie Stowe, and you have not spoken to us personally about what you intend to do, and it affects us all. You should stop and think before you start making these changes, because it's not about one or two people. It's tens of thousands of people's lives and settlement communities that you should be concerned with preservation, because we make money for you. We are kept Charleston looking beautiful. When tourists come, they come to see us, not downtown Charleston. You represent the entire community. They go to these little outlining areas. Various areas bring Charleston County money. Tourism is money. We are bringing you that, and we're trying to preserve it. We have preserved it. We look out for the best of the best. We don't destroy our properties. We don't go around wanting to cut every little tree that there is. We're still farming in many of those areas. James Island, John's Island, McLennanville, Hollywood, Adams Run, John's Island, Walden Law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sam Spence, Anthony Bryant, Justin Schwebler.
Chairman, the second speaker was not, was not here, but he was signed up. How does that happen?
It's a good question. Well, he's not here, so he didn't get to speak.
It's our policy on public comments that you can only sign in on a spot if you're present. I don't know if that's the same policy that the zoning and planning staff uses for public hearings or not, but that might be where your confusion was on that.
I noticed it wasn't Carter on there. Thank you.
Hello, council. I'm Sam Spence from the Preservation Society of Charleston. I want to thank you for your consideration of the additional public feedback on the proposed amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. There are also two memos we produced last year included in the public comments tonight. We also thank you for moving forward on the temporary rezoning of Ten Mile, which I ask you to support tonight at third reading. However, the latest amendments to the Preservation Ordinance doesn't, don't include important mechanisms to protect vulnerable historic district communities like Ten Mile and those to come. The public meetings in December, we think, were important demonstrations of the value of the irreplaceable culture and community in county-designated historic districts, and as such, we're hopeful that council will consider additional amendments, such as an advisory role for the Historic Preservation Commission on subdivision review, ways to support the creation of area character appraisals, and ways to protect communities in the time between historic district designation and the implementation of an overlay district, which can take up to 18 months. Now, y'all may have seen the Post and Courier yesterday. The front page headline, "Council Residents at Odds of a Preservation," and I know none of y'all want to be at odds with residents, and you probably, you may not think you are, but residents know the threats their communities face, and they feel the firsthand impacts of incompatible development. And again, just today, another article, Allendale, "Afraid of Becoming Mount Pleasant Halts Most New Subdivisions." And then again, in December last year, apartment condo ban for Mount Pleasant to be extended again. And I only read these headlines because, because that development is not going away. And in between Allendale, and in between Allendale and Mount Pleasant sits Ten Mile. These impacts are felt far beyond Ten Mile and Mount Pleasant, though, and they impact Somerville, Red Top, Parker's Ferry, Walden Law Island. And so we can, we ask for you to consider further amendments on these before third reading, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Spence.
Anthony Bryant, Justin Schwebler, Mary Howard.
As a former board member with Pearl Askew, I wanted to support her initiatives, because she sat with me years ago and served very well in terms of being on the BZA and kind of watching, I guess, and I watched too, before the Planning and Enabling Act really became in effect, the planning of developments and all the developments that took place, and also the overlay districts. Now, these overlay districts is before you. You're not responsible for the council before you understand it, but you have to consider your historical involvement based upon their decisions. And what I see is, all those decisions led to the night, and so I don't think that you should, should not consider those decisions. UDO was done to be able to try to deal with the gentrification of the city of Charleston, basically, pretty much, and those pressures came from the cities, in particular, the city of Charleston. The Presbyterian Society, I respect them in 1920, 1920s, they had more power than the Planning Commission, than the city council. Our city council has got more power this year, right? So the city of Charleston created a value that was so expensive and led to this problem. So I really think you need to look back at the city of Charleston, other cities, and say, okay, what, what did you do and what can you do to help us mitigate the problems in the rural areas? That's just my, my concern. Thank you.
Justin Schwebler, Mary Howard, Susan Kershaw.
Justin Schwebler, Historic Charleston Foundation. We would first like to thank you for deferring the Historic Preservation Ordinance amendments to allow time for Charleston County staff to have dedicated public information sessions to gather community input for the proposed amendments. We are inspired by the robust attendance and participation by the public who care deeply about preserving their endangered historic communities, and we would also like to thank county staff for the incredible amount of effort they put in outside normal work hours to make those meetings happen and the collation of that community feedback that I'm sure was laborious. Through our advocacy on this issue, we've asked for two things. One, for more time so that the community could have greater input on the proposed amendments. And second, for the county to entertain changes to the amendments to ensure the long-term protection of our Charleston County historic districts, particularly the historic African-American settlement communities. You accommodated our first request for more time, and the public responded with unified voice that the current amendments were not good for the Historic Preservation Commission and for the communities and the resources that that ordinance is intended to protect. And you accommodated our second request for county staff to be empowered to make changes to the amendments to incorporate the public's concerns. We were disappointed to see, however, that there was no inclusion in the updated ordinance that the HPC even retained oversight as a recommending body on the subdivision approvals and site design applications. We feel that this simple move would have alleviated the county's concern over conflict with state law and still provided valuable oversight for the Preservation Commission to help protect Charleston County historic districts and the settlement communities. Because this most basic level of oversight was not included in the updated amendments, we are left to recommend denial of the HBO amendments. Thank you.
Mary Howard, Susan Kershaw, Richard Habersham.
My name is Mary Howard, 2760 Joe Lane on John's Island. I just wanted to let you know that when I was trying to read this, it's hard to document online, it was quite confusing. Just wanted to let you know. The other thing is, if I was reading the first part right, they're changing the name to just commission? Is that correct? Just a question, because I think it needs to still have Historic Preservation Commission in it. That was just the first part that I read. It doesn't sound to me like what I read that the communities are being listened to by the council. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Kershaw, Richard Habersham, Denise Fraz.
I'm usually up here talking about my trees, but this is more important, much more important. These are people, and I want to add my voice to theirs. I know this is complicated. I don't profess to have answers or fully understand all the issues, but I think we have to get this right. We must do what is best for these communities. We have to incur extra costs if we have to, extra time, address the legal and process issues. Expediency and efficiency aren't the right priorities here. The right priority is getting this right for the communities. We have to respect these people and these communities and enable them to have agency over their lives at what should be prioritized. We owe these communities. We should go many extra miles to do what they believe they need in order to keep their homes and their sense of place. Thank you. Homes and their sense of place. Thank you.
Richard Habersham, Denise Fuego, Emma Berry.
Good evening, council. First of all, let, thank everybody, council and staff, for when y'all, the HPC, y'all did a great thing. This was something that, that was needed. This was something that we appreciated. And also the staff, they did an awesome job, you know, trying to put this together. But this document, I hope it'd be a living document, you know, like some, like other people say that you gotta get it right. Sometimes you don't get it right on the first go around, sometimes, you know, you gotta make changes, and we know that. The changes is gonna, gonna come. One change I seen it with, when they made the change with, with the HPC by grubbing, they put it in hands of planning. And from some comments, they changed it, and what they did is, is if you got one acre or less, it goes to planning, and if you got a large tract, it stays into the HPC, because if you stay in the HPC, they look a little bit different from what planning does, and it helps. You know, what I got from that is, you know, they made changes when changes is needed. So, you know, with this document here, if you have to come back again and make some changes, do listen to the communities, you know? Come back and let the community be a part of it. What I've seen is, we liked the document, it wasn't us, it was the developers that wanted the changes. The communities, the communities right now, they want the protection. Charleston County is becoming sort of one-sided. It's the have against the have-nots, and we don't want that. We wanted a way we can stay in the community, I want my grandkids to stay in the community, because we love Charleston County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Fuego, Emma Berry, Kalia Wilson.
Hi, this is Denise Fuego, and I'm the executive director of Housing for All Mount Pleasant and Holy City Trex. Both organizations work on affordable housing, which Charleston County is in great need of. I want to thank the council and staff for all the, the hard work they're doing on this proposal. I just want to caution, I think our mission is that in 100 years, our great-grandchildren still can visit the settlement and historic communities in this region. It's got to be a 100-year mission. I worry about the one clause that allows you to take one property out of the district because developers and money will win, and the district will not be there in 20 years or 100 years. So we look forward to working with the county as well as with the property owners in these historic districts to provide affordable housing for the families where we can. So thank you very much for your commitment to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emma Berry, Kalia Wilson, Filippo Ravalico.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Emma Berry, and I serve as the Communities and Transportation Project Manager at the Coastal Conservation League located at 131 Spring Street. The Coastal Conservation League stands in solidarity with the historic settlement communities of Charleston County. We share the same concerns as they do regarding the removal of land use considerations from the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Settlement communities are often recognized by their unique settlement patterns that offer historical significance to their foundations. Removing land use is an indicator of historical appropriateness for new construction in these communities will strip significant power and meaning from the Historic Preservation Commission's work and leave Charleston County's historic settlement communities vulnerable. We appreciate the council for holding community meetings in December before voting on these amendments. However, no significant changes to reflect the community input have been made as a result of those meetings. We strongly encourage county council to deny these amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. However, if the amendments are passed despite widespread public concern, it is absolutely imperative that Charleston County take new steps to protect these vulnerable communities. Once again, we appreciate county council for supporting Ten Mile's request for rezoning, and we are encouraged by discussions of an overlay district for Ten Mile. Other settlement communities must be granted the same opportunities, and it is important that these efforts move quickly in the absence of protection from the Historic Preservation Ordinance. The Conservation League believes these are critical safeguards for historical, historic settlement communities, and we would be happy to work with Charleston County and members of settlement communities to pursue these protections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kalila Wilson, Filippo Ravalico, Willie Johnson.
Kalila Wilson. I'm here today supporting preservation of historic settlement communities. As a public school educator here in Charleston County, I must do what is right and what I hope to prepare my students to do. Fanny Orr was born in 1901 in Phillips and later lived in the Old Village, serving all of Mount Pleasant diligently as a midwife. Her astuteness and aptitude paved the way for her granddaughter, my grandmother, to own property off of Highway 41 in the Phillips community. The Phillips community is one of the last remaining historic black settlements, communities in the region, and has been threatened by Charleston County's ultimate one proposal to widen Highway 41 directly through the historic and residential area. I'm proud to say that Phillips was the first South Carolina settlement community to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. I stand with all of the historic settlement communities fighting to preserve our land, and I oppose the amendments of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance that remove trees protections and remove public input. I oppose the amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance and related zoning and land development regulations ordinance. I support aspects of the Comprehensive Plan five-year review specifically placing emphasis on the protection of the unique Low Country character in African-American settlement communities. I support the Comprehensive Plan goals, land use element, cultural resources element, and housing element. These are specifically especially important when addressing subdivisions. I'm concerned about what the county uses as a basis to determine smart growth. I support the Ten Mile rezoning from R4 and UR to S3 without parcel exemptions. I stand with my fellow natives to preserve what we I stand with my fellow natives to preserve what we have built and developed, even when our ancestors were forced to do so with no regard to them as human beings. We will continue the journey towards preserving our historic communities. Thank you.
Filippo Ravalico, Willie Johnson, Fred Smalls.
Good evening, Filippo Ravalico, 510 Live Oak Drive, Mount Pleasant, and with the South Carolina Environmental Law Project. We've been here a few times already on this topic, and the risk of repetition is unfortunately unavoidable at this point. I have to commend staff for the great work they did, especially in presenting, they made it look like it's some significant changes to the August original draft. They may have changed two paragraphs, which are important and appreciated, but there's so much that has not been listened or heard that it's kind of, it looks a little bit like a mirror game. Anyways, in two minutes, it's very hard to get into the details of a 6,000-word documents. The community has not had the chance to get down and propose their own amendments, specific issues, that's probably part of the problem. There's a huge shift in the new amendments from a focus that includes and values the district as a white district, white entity to the property. It's not the same thing. The new version is very, is very deficient in protecting the district. The article that someone before mentioned on the post inquiry yesterday is a very good one. I encourage everyone to read it. It's pretty balanced, well-covered. There's a thing that needs to be corrected at the end. It says, "In late 2023, a few feedback session with members of the community were held, but the county didn't get much feedback request other than to elaborate on what the proposed amendments are." Again, that's a part of the process. You cannot expect people to show up with drafting amendments at this public hearing. And also, the advocates, the expert did submit those comments. "In December, the Preservation Society identified protection mechanism while, while, area character appraisal and zoning are developed. We submitted the same request the day before. The removal of the ability to consider non-designation evidence is problematic." This is the point I made last month, and I'm gonna stop here because I'm talking again in a few minutes, and I don't want to take time. There's no regulation for the existing communities. We have to fix that, otherwise we're stripping protection.
Thank you.
Willie Johnson, Fred Smalls.
My name is Willie Johnson. I'm from the Parkers Ferry area. I'm talking about the historic, and after that, I want to also talk about some trees in our community. The Parkers Ferry School, which is the Willtown Community Center, was there now during the early 1900s, and we're trying to get that to a historical area for the people in the community, the old and the young alike. And as I heard someone said, for their children and their grandchildren and their great-grandsons, they will have a place to know, to be, and said that they were born and raised in there. You got older people, well over 100 and some years old, living in the same community. We would just like to make that a historical area, and I'm asking Charleston County, the council members right now, I work along with our county council, District 8, Mr. Boykin, and I'm quite sure that we could get this done, but I want you guys to get on board because a lot of our lands in our community are being taken away by development, like someone said earlier. We don't, if you don't have the money, you can't stay, you'll have to be going away, and a lot of people was born and raised there, and they don't want to leave their home and their land. So, we just asking the counties right now, and everyone here can attest to that, if you don't have money, you'll be pushed out. So, we don't want to be forced out. And my other thought was, my second command is about the trees and the bridges in our community and the roads. I know a lot of time when I talk to Charleston County, they say Colliton County is handling it. Mr. Boykin, he can attest to that, he was out there. We ride some of the roads, we looked over the bridges, those things, and they're well over 50 or 60 years, and the trees are hanging on the road. I had some friends that four, three or four of them got killed over on John's Island, I mean James Island. I'm quite sure you all saw the paper, the news, and it's really ridiculous that you have to lose a life to save a tree. Some of these trees are just awesome. I mean, they're laying over in the road, and you don't know when, you know, you could be passing by and it just fall on you. Over there on the Parkers Ferry area, we had three or four deaths, and a young man about a month ago got both arms, leg broken. Luckily, he lived, but I showed Mr. Boykin and the other associate what happened and the area it happened in. So, we just need to try to do something with some of these trees. I mean, all of them can't be cut down, but the ones that look like they're gonna fall in a minute, I just hope some of you guys can ride down, and then you'd be scared to ride down the road. So, that's all I gotta say, but the historical thing that we definitely need, take care of some of our roads, we are paying tax dollars. Roads need to be fixed, and especially that bridge, the overpass over the train track. I mean, they did something to it, but now the stuff that they put in is out, already out again. So, that's all I gotta say, but thank y'all for listening to me, and let's try to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fred Smalls.
I'm Fred Smalls. I live at 2959 Elijah Smalls Road in the Phillips community. We believe that the Charleston County Historical Organization is really a good policy for us. We believe that the purpose was to help protect and give voice to the unincorporated areas and predominantly settlement communities. But now that it is working, and our communities' concerns are being heard and addressed, now the powers-to-be want changes made to these policies. That's big business, realtors, and developers. And they want to continue doing business as usual, purchasing large portions of lands in our community and developing it or moving it into one of the subdivisions or towns. If this is done, if these changes are allowed, this would be detrimental to our communities. So, we are asking that this council continue to make sure that any changes or amendments made to this policy is keeping with the purpose of it, which is to protect our communities, our rights, and our quality of life. Thank you.
That's it for...
That's it.
We still, we have some for the fee, but that's it for that one.
We have...
The fee ordinance, I have one, we have one more, public hearing.
Okay, we have one more public hearing.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend the Charleston County Code of Ordinances pertaining to fees in the zoning and planning department to establish a fee of $25 to apply for an amendment to designated historic properties and historic districts.
All right, the first person's Elizabeth Singleton, then Anthony Bryant, and then Filippo Ravalico.
Elizabeth Singleton.
Ms. Singleton?
Elizabeth Singleton, 1833 North Crumble Road, James Island. I don't see why we have to pay for something that nobody else is paying for. I'm confused. If we're in our district, county is doing work for everybody, but if we want to do something special, we have to pay for it. I don't quite understand, I'm going to do the research on this, but I don't quite understand this fee that settlement communities have to pay extra for. It's rather confusing. It's not, it's more or less, it was not a requirement for other communities, but if we want to do something, then we have to pay. I'm gonna do the research, because I just don't, I don't understand why settlement communities are different from everybody else. Doesn't make sense. But we'll check on that, because otherwise, you're really discriminating against us, because we don't get it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anthony Bryant, Filippo Ravalico.
Can we clarify that before she moves on, because that's an application fee for everybody, not just settlement communities, so...
And Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans, can you clear that up? That's all I want. Clarify that for us.
Emily Peck, okay. Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, no problem. So, this fee that we're proposing today is for a new application type, which would be an amendment to designated historic properties and districts. And like I mentioned last week, this would allow county council to formally adopt additional supporting documentation after properties and districts are designated. It could also allow you all to adopt things like area character appraisals and identify additional contributing resources within historic districts. And as stated, this would apply to anyone that's seeking this amendment, not just in a settlement community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant, is he next?
Yes.
I was confused as well. I'm glad you clarified it, but my concern is, what I saw in the amendments was the Planters Zoning Commission, that's a fee, the BZA, that's a fee, and this is a fee. So, if someone is doing a project, an affordable housing project, or some project to do some good or resident in the community, is doing some good, and there are existing residents within the community, my concern would be, would it be some CDBG block grant money? Would it be some waivers for them? If they're doing something in existing, I'm not talking about people coming in to do something, people that's in the community, have a family member that needs to get a waiver in terms of anything with this, would you consider having some waivers and exemptions, and also some additional money from the block grants you're getting from the feds and getting leftover money from the Opera Funds, or any money you've got extra left over, you can apply that money to folk that need it the most.
Thank you, sir.
Filippo Ravalico.
Filippo Ravalico, 510 Live Oak Drive, Mount Pleasant. So, I guess probably some of the confusion of Ms. Singleton is understandable when one thinks of, what are these applications that are gonna require the $25 fees? So, the amendments right now is only gonna be required by the three existing districts, Phillips, Bfield, and Ten Mile. They're already designated, they should already be protected. So, the point I keep making that there's no regiment to protect this existing district in the proposed amendments, it's very relevant, because you're basically taking protection away, and all of the sudden, it looks like you have to pay, but let it be clear, it's not that you pay, and all of the sudden, you're good, you're protected. No, you apply for a month-long process to get the contributing resources listed, the ACA approved, and on and on and on. So, the amendments contain a mechanism to add the designation, but it can take months. So, what are we doing in the meantime? Every month, the Historic Preservation Commission is reviewing certificate of historical appropriateness in these communities. What criteria are they gonna follow? This, the new ordinance doesn't say. If you don't fix this point, more than a fee, some people may look at it as a poll tax, or maybe a poll tax and a historic preservation literacy test all in one. And I know this is not the intention of staff or this council, but why even risking giving the impression? Let's fix the ordinance, let's do it right, and it's working. Look, look at the last meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission. There were two permits, that, the ordinance is working, is protecting, and not even the developers are complaining too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, that's it. Then we have public comments. Yes, sir.
Right now, we have our regular...
Do we get to ask questions of the staff at the public hearing? You said that we could.
Mr. Askew, you did not sign up, and you have to be present to sign up, so you missed your spot. I'm sorry.
Are we allowed to ask questions at the...
Pardon me?
Did you say we're allowed to ask questions at the public hearing, at the end of the hearing?
Ask questions.
Or make comments, because isn't there a give and take at a public hearing? I thought we could ask staff questions.
You can ask, go ahead and ask staff.
Okay. I have questions first.
Well, let me ask one.
Wanted to thank everybody for coming. It meant a lot to hear from everybody. I agree with what I heard, and I wanted to ask the staff, because this is a public hearing, where we have a right to ask questions, and the public has a right to hear, that these, the ordinance that today was created in 2018, and I want to, just asked a question in a public setting, was it not drafted by the county council's attorney? And who would answer that? Is there anybody that can answer that? Was it not drafted by, with the cooperation of the then-county attorney, who's now a federal judge?
That's correct.
And isn't it also true that since 2018, since it was drafted, not one iota of any local, state, or federal law has changed in any way at all that would affect the legality of this ordinance?
Mr. Kowalski, I don't believe that staff is in a position to answer questions with regards to the legalities, and I don't think it would be...
I'm asking if any federal law, state, or local has changed one iota since this was drafted that would affect this ordinance?
Actually, yes.
Okay, what has changed in the federal, local, and state law?
Because that would be legal in nature, that this is not the forum for that discussion to be had. We could certainly go into executive session if that is the will of this body, but that would not be appropriate for this public discussion tonight.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kowalski, I've allowed you to ask a question.
The question is that part of the reason that I understood that the change was, as we heard, there was vagueness in the application. I sat through a public hearing for the Betsy Carson Highway about the medical center, and the reason, and I voted against it because the public didn't want it, but the issue was, they didn't want it because it wasn't a fit. That is just as vague as anything in this historical commission that's gonna change a way of life.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes?
We are gonna have additional hearings after this, there'll be times to ask these questions. This was a public hearing where the public was to come to speak, it's not for us to ask questions at this meeting.
I respect that, but I thought the difference between public comments, when public comments, we just listen, in a public hearing where there's a give and take, we have people coming from all over the county for something that would change their way of life forever, and I feel it's worth having a discussion and us be able to ask questions of staff for something that would change something that has been there. And I just asked one more question, just to confirm, you made a presentation, in all the things I heard, there were public hearings, I was at the one on December 6th, not one person from the community, not one person has come to support these changes from anywhere. Every, every person, every letter, every petition was to oppose what's been, these changes, is that correct? There's not one single petition, not one single person wrote, not one single person voiced an agreement of what you want to do? It was uniformly 100% opposed, and why are we not listening in this sense to what the community wants, in the other sense, we listened because of vagueness, it was not convenient for a way of life and traffic? But I'm saying, was there one petition, one person, one email who supports these changes from the community? Can anybody answer that? I didn't see one, that's why I'm asking.
Mr. Kowalski, there were numerous people that spoke earlier. Excuse me. Excuse me. This is not the forum for this. We will have, we will have hearings coming in the future, that will be the time for the give and take for this, but there were people that thanked us for what staff did to get to this point. We had 10, 10 or how many meetings, I can't remember, we met with the public, but there were numerous people that thanked us for various items that were done out of all this, maybe not for all of them, but for some of them. And so, I just... I just want you to understand that.
I understand.
It wasn't, it's not like nobody had anything good to say about it, and so, we just, we need to move on.
Let me make one final comment, Herb, this is to say that I think what I heard, people thanked the staff, which I did too, they took the time to hear people, but I still, I didn't hear one person that was in favor of taking the light to take the subdivision away from the commission. 100% of every person that spoke out, 100% of the petitions was opposed to that provision. Not a single person in all these hearings and all this time spoke in favor of the heart of the change that we would make. And I think that is extraordinary, and needs to be listened to. We listened in other communities when people were split because they didn't like the traffic consequences.
This is inappropriate at this time. Discussion occurs when a motion has been made.
Correct.
There's not a motion, it's a public hearing. We're going to have meetings. There's not a motion, it's a public hearing, we're going to have meetings.
We are gonna have meetings.
During the meetings, this is inappropriate, it's out of order, inappropriate.
Yes, sir, Mr. Prior?
When of order, during a public hearing, council members does have a right to ask questions. Now, during public comments, we listen to the public. Now, I've been there for 20-plus years, and the rules have always stated that for council members, because after the young lady speaks up there, she would ask, or the chairman would ask, is there any member of council who wants to weigh in? And after council weighs in, then it goes to the public. So I just want to make sure that people understand, a public hearing, council members get to weigh in first, and then to the public, but they don't get to interact with the public asking questions back and forth.
That was my mistake, thank you.
Yes, sir, I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Chair?
We gonna clarify what now? Because, I mean, if I'm speaking, I have a question, I'm not letting anybody muzzle me. I have a right to do that during public... Let me finish please, sir. I represent the folk. Chairman or not, I'm not letting anybody muzzle me. If I'm in the right to speak, I'm gonna speak. If they get upset, they get upset about it. And he's within his right to do that, because I do have a question. I mean, let's be honest. I mean, my question is, sir, I don't know what the $25 is for. Someone, please explain to him, because I don't know what the $25 is for.
That was explained at the committee meeting.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know, so I'm gonna ask the question, what is the $25? As he had a right to ask whatever question he wants to, my question is, what's the purpose of the $25? Because I don't know.
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to address that. So, again, staff is proposing a new application type that would allow citizens to apply to amend their historic district or historic property status in order to incorporate additional supporting documentation, contributing historic resources, or something such as an area character appraisal study to strengthen their designation. So that's what the $25 fee.
Well, I'd like to ask, who brought this into existence? Who put that monetary value on it? Why it's not $5 or $10, why is it $25?
The $25 amount is consistent with the other application fees for the historic preservation for other than amendments. That is a very nominal fee, compared to our other fees, but council creates the fee schedule, so if council wants to change that to a different amount, that's fine with staff.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further questions from council for staff? Okay, hearing none, we'll move into regular public comments.
We have four people signed up, the first person is Anthony Bryant, and then Liz Munn, and then Mary Howard.
Wow, I was at school board meeting yesterday, in the ninth district circuit, and my concern for Henry Darby's, my alumni, North Charleston High School, and my concern for clinical young people, who are clinical, you don't find out they're clinical till they're on the 6 o'clock news. And you can't, you can't deal with their clinical behavior, because their records is shut down until they drop out of school and get on 6 o'clock news. So, my concern is trying to help Henry and others in the school district help observe better of these clinical behaviors, because the police department really have clinical people. People just don't go and do the things they do. You go in a store every day and buy stuff, never rob it. But somebody gonna rob one store. They're clinical. Somebody gonna jump out of car and run for the police department, they're clinical. They're not, that's what, I would stop my car, get my identification, and move on and go to court. And some people are clinical, and they know they're clinical. And they letting them get shot. And they think it's funny. People are being done out there, because they just ain't got good sense. Right? So I'm here right now to say, we gotta have a real conference about clinical behavior. I live in adverse effect community my whole life. I've seen adverse behavior my whole life. So why would I sit there and say, my homeboy was sixth grade with me, and he go to high school, dropped out, and then he in prison for 30 years? That just don't happen like that. You know, if I want to be a police officer in the school district, and one minute say, you want to get arrested by the police officer? It don't work that way. When are we gonna become more conscientious to people who struggle? We're not conscious, we're not concerned about their suffering. We gotta be concerned about those, what's the goodness of merit in that? You see how goodness of merit is here, what happened, man, if I don't, you a minister, right? You a preacher. What happened to that man if you don't get involved with him? How about that?
Liz Munn, Mary Howard, Betty Neerman.
My name is Liz Munn, I live at 3631 Morris Avenue, and I have been very happy to sit and listen to all of the comments and things that were read and said, and I came in originally to plead my case again about the tree ordinance, but it has, throughout this whole process, it has become more and more clear to me that we come here and we say things, and you all look very kind, and perhaps maybe interested, but nothing, we never get any understanding of what's happening, or how we can go about making some sort of change, or assuring that our voices are heard. I have personally written to every single one of you, multiple times. I have written to my county councilmen several times. Crickets, crickets are louder than my responses. Please listen and communicate. If we could just get some good communication or understanding, I feel like we wouldn't have so many questions, and you guys wouldn't have so much defensive. And thank you, Mr. Kibrovsky, for asking things and doing things and standing up for us. Thank you.
Mary Howard, Betty Neerman.
Hello, my name is Mary Howard, 2760 Jolene, Johns Island. This is in regards to the public works ordinance that you're supposed to be having a third reading. The question that I really, is on my mind, is, you may have said it before, and I missed it, but, in the editorial, from Linda Ketner, it was, "Conservation groups in more than 7,000 constituents have signed petitions emailed in attendant council meetings to implore..." Oh, we're up to 9,300. "Have signed petitions emailed in attendant council meetings to implore members to protect our grand trees through the current process of review." My question is, how many people support this, other than the council? How many people have petitioned, yes, we want this to go through, so please, county council, pass this? And it sounds, I don't know that answer, and before you guys, if you can table it, if you don't know the answer, and you can't give us an exact number in comparison to who's been against this proposal, then I think it should be tabled until you can give us an answer, please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Neerman.
My name is Betty Neerman, I live at 104 Nightingale Manor in North Charleston. I'm a member of St. John Catholic Church in North Charleston, and a proud member of the Charleston Area Justice Ministry. I want to thank Chairman Sasse and the council members for approving the use of the accommodations tax money for workforce housing. That council has agreed to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the South Carolina Community Loan Fund to structure and manage a trust fund is a tremendous step towards solving our dire housing crisis. As a member of Cajum, we look forward to seeing projects come to fruition with the funds you have allocated. Again, thank you to the Housing Committee, and for all the council for making this dream come true for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, sir, but just a comment. I'm very much pleased with the broad-based support that I see this evening. It does us well that when Americans of all types of backgrounds and class could come together for a subject, to help someone who doesn't look like you. That's very good, that's very proud, and that's what America is all about. And as I've said, moments gone, time's gone, not to take them so long, sir. I don't love this country because of its gigantic buildings and bridges and medical accomplishments and achievements. I love America because America is self-corrective. But she sees that there's a problem. It may take her a long time, but she is going to correct it. And your faces here tonight are saying that you want something corrected, and I just want to applaud you from this broad-based support, and say, thank you very much, because this is what America's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Now, we're gonna go into our county council meeting. Mr. Boykin is gonna lead us in a prayer, and Mr. Kibrovsky, would you lead the pledge?
Y'all please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace, and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America, and in the republic of liberty, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Freedom of Information Act?
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Move for approval, second. Approved by Mr. Prior, seconded by...
Second.
Reverend Middleton. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you very much.
Pedations to the clerk and her staff.
Thank you.
Move for approval by Mr. Prior, item three.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Darby, excuse me, by Mr. Moody, Middleton, I'm sorry. Well, okay, Mr. Moody, I think, I know. Alrighty, that's our resolution. Recognition Resolution, Mount Zion AME Church renovation dedication, request to adopt. We have accepted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. She alright? Yeah. Would you?
Yeah, she just coughing.
A resolution of Charleston County Council congratulating the historic Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church on the dedication of its restored and renovated building. Whereas Charleston County Council recognizes that churches have diverse positive impacts on communities, ranging from increased trust, improved mental and physical health, decreased crime, and enhanced levels of volunteering and community outreach. Churches are the central institutions of their American life, because they provide the moral foundation within our community by encouraging virtue, self-restraint, and community awareness. And whereas Charleston County Council, from time to time, has the privilege of recognizing such institutions that positively improve our community, stimulate love, and promote good deeds. And whereas historic Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church has been ministering to the spiritual, intellectual, physical, emotional, and environmental needs of all people by spreading Christ's liberating gospel through the word and deed since October 16th, 1882, when it first purchased as first masonry building owned by blacks in the city of Charleston. And whereas that architectural significance of the historic Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church distinguishes it among churches and makes it unique. The church was designed by Edward C. Jones and constructed between 1847 and 1848. Jones was influenced by the simplified classism seen in the English churches of the same period. There are only a few church buildings in Charleston built in this style. And whereas the historic Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church has been and continues to be a place for spiritual, cultural, social, and emotional uplift in our community. From Frederick Douglass's arrival in Charleston, where he delivered versions of the Self-Made Man and European travels addresses at the church, to the modern-day focus on racial healing, and with community conversations on truth and reconciliation among the prominent local and national leaders, the Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church continues to thrive as a house of worship in the city of Charleston amidst the changing demographics of the city, and continues to provide relevant, life-changing ministry for the entire community. And whereas the historic Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church recently completed a multimillion-dollar capital project during a worldwide pandemic, which was dedicated to the glory of God and service to the community under the leadership of Reverend Dr. Kylon Jerome Middleton on Sunday, February 18th, 2024, by the Right Reverend Samuel Lawrence Green, Sr., presiding prelate of the Seventh Episcopal District of the African Methodist Episcopal Church. And whereas the project to restore and renovate the historic structure was undertaken by using sustainable materials and being mindful to reduce the church's carbon footprint to provide the prolific witness to the community and to be the gathering place for the community for years to come. Now therefore be it resolved by Charleston County Council that the historic Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church be congratulated on the dedication of the restored and renovated physical plant of its historic church structure, and that the genuine appreciation of Charleston County Council be extended to the entire congregation on behalf of the citizens of Charleston County. Charleston County Council, Herbert R. Sasse III, Chairman, February 27th, 2024.
I just want to say thank you to all of you. On behalf of Board of Trustees, the Board of, Stewart Board, and our senior pastor, Reverend Dr. Kylon Middleton, and our members and staff, we just say thank you. Thank you very much, and to your panel. Thank you.
All right, next item. Third reading ordinances. ZLDR amendments, county-initiated public works projects exemptions, Article 3.7, Article 9.2, ordinance, third reading.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance Number 1202 is amended to exempt the South Carolina Department of Transportation and Charleston County Public Works Projects approved by county council from certain tree protection and preservation requirements at the following document locations, Chapter 3, Development Review Procedures, and Chapter 9, Development Standards. Mr. Boykin?
I'd like a discussion first? Then we have a right to discuss this first, Chairman? Before we vote on it?
I think we do. Yes, sir.
Okay, this is the tree ordinance, I just wanna, this is the third reading, and the public needs to understand, if we vote today to approve this, this is it. And I want to just reiterate, what's at stake here? It's the right of the public to have, we saw the best evidence, we had a public hearing today, we saw the difference in lifetime, what the difference between a public hearing is and public comments. And the very things that you look at when you sign up, it says, public hearings, county council will not limit the number of people who wish to address the body, and there's interaction, we tried to have questions, and that happens, in public comments, there's none. So this means that if we pass this today, one of the things that people love most about living here, the ambiance, the trees, and what makes life worth living, as Councilman Darby said, maybe be the size of your home, or how wealthy or poor, we all love living here, and the trees and the canopies are what gives us cover. We will give up the right to have public input on that. You saw that people email us, and they can ignore it or not, a public hearing, you cannot ignore. As many people can come on a concentrated issue, that won't take place. We had, what baffles me, we had the public hearing on what to do with the medical center and Betsy Harrison Drive, and some of the same people who, I voted with that, because the public didn't want it. But that gave a forum for the people to express themselves, and that was because of, they didn't, they think it would increase the traffic, or they thought it would change their life. You know, the trees are just as important, it goes to everybody in the county, we would give up the right... It goes to everybody in the county. We would give up the right if we pass this to have a public hearing. You'd be limited to public comments, there wouldn't be notices, and that's all the difference of the world. You can ask questions, and this is how things erode as the things we love. And I strongly urge us to vote against this and not give up a public hearing, because this, basically, all of us up here at some point will no longer be here, will be in the public, and we will have lost the right that you lose to address us in a way that's meaningful. A public hearing is a meaningful opportunity to express yourselves on something that is very important. Public comments, you can have people speaking about various things, it's a limited impact, there's not a concentrated effort, the people can make their voices heard, and people need to understand what this change means. And I believe it's driven by development and other issues and convenience. We don't exist, again, we have very good staff, but we exist here to serve the public. We don't exist here to serve our staff. We represent you, and I feel this is something that we should not give up. And it's the very reason I got involved on county council, leading the fight to save the maritime forest in Solvance Island. We had a council that wanted to cut down our trees for the view. And I just would say that all of them are replaced. Every single one who voted to cut down our trees did not have public input, were no longer there. And I said, "This is something that we all care deeply about, and I would hope, and we don't vote today, to give up the right for the public to have an input that they would no longer have if we vote to adopt this."
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Certainly, there are some components of what Mr. Kibrowski just said I agree with. I do feel that public hearings, you know, for proposed amendments for zoning and land development regulation ordinances should be afforded. And so, a couple of weeks ago, you know, I was kind of fuzzy on that, but I got clarification when I met with staff today, that under the ordinance as it stands, then there would just be public comments and not public hearings. I do feel that it should be appropriate, just like we heard the public hearings, and even earlier, the staff gave presentation prior to the public hearing that would probably occur on the additional historic preservation pieces. I think that this type of amendment raises to that level and should also enjoy before council. You know, I don't think it needs to go to the BZA or wherever else, but before council, that would be appropriate for us to have a series of public hearings on the topic prior to making those particular types of votes. That way, the public does have an opportunity to weigh in singularly on that subject. They can come en masse, as we've seen on various issues that are important to those communities, and we can hear them, and not only hear them, we receive those comments, we act on those accordingly, and those things are transparent and open in the public. There's also public comments, and certainly that is always afforded through every process that we, I mean, every council meeting, there's a public comment, period. But I would like to amend if it would be, this is third reading, right, and we can make that amendment on third reading.
If you were on the winning side on the last vote, and I think you were.
Is that true?
Yeah, and I think you were.
I was, because I changed. So, again, I would like to amend it that for this particular zoning and land development regulation ordinances, that we provide opportunities for public hearings relative to proposed amendments, so that those types of categorical amendments can be heard and the public's voice can be received.
I would second that.
Chair?
It's moved and seconded, moved by Reverend Middleton, seconded by Mr. Kibrowski.
Just a question for Mr. Middleton. You mean a singular public hearing for?
A singular public hearing.
Then I would also offer my support, sir.
What is the definition of a singular public hearing as opposed to a public hearing? Just so I understand.
So, one hearing.
Per project.
Right, per project. When that particular project is up to be on the agenda, it is publicly, you know, publicly noticed, the public has opportunity to weigh in, as we have, you know, done on so many different other issues that are germane to public trust, and they can come and speak.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Mr. Pryor?
I want to clarify some misinformation, too. This is not for subdivisions, and this is not for, you know, buildings, projects. This is in case there's a tree in the way of a road project, and, you know, and the project needs to move forward. You know, county council would not have to have it, but I'm agreeing with the public hearing, if that's what the majority of the body wants. But I want to clarify, because Mr. Kibrowski says for development, this is not for big developers, okay? This is strictly, from what I see and with the information I've got, since I've been here, you know, for tree ordinance, you saw the gentleman came up and said he lost somebody because they ran into a tree. We put trees over lives, and I don't disagree with them on that. And so, if there's a tree in the middle of the road, you know, the one they got, the Widowmaker on James Island over there, you know, I'm sure a lot of people agree that a tree should be removed, but that's a state SCODD project, so we have no concerns over that. And so, let us be perfectly clear before the audience leave out here tonight. This is not about regular housing development. This is about when we are constructing roads. This is not about 526 for the misinformation that's being put out there. This is not about 526.
And drainage.
Yeah, yeah, and drainage. This is, this far. So, Mr. Kibrowski, you know, you petitioned your colleagues, they're going along with you, so, you know, I'll tell you like Ms. Craven said years ago, you know, you got the support, you got the win, take the vote and be quiet. Before you talk yourself out of a vote. That's all I'm gonna tell you. You talk yourself out of a vote, so leave it at that. Take the win and be happy.
Mr. Werman?
Well, no, I'll take Mr. Pryor's advice. I've been with Mr. Kibrowski on this, and I think he kind of touched on it, that part of these, part of this issue is, this just doesn't come up a lot to begin with, which is one of the reasons I don't have an issue with, in fact, would favor certainly a public hearing, because it's really not going to slow us down much. It's come up, I think, 15 times in the last 10 years. So, I'm certainly in support of it, and congratulations as well, Mr. Kibrowski.
Anybody else? All, all right, well, I guess.
Mr. Chair, I think I need to vote again now that we've amended it.
I guess we need to vote. To accept the amendment, yeah. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? All right.
Okay. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The motion or the ordinance passes, third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Next one, S3 rezoning for Ten Mile Community.
An ordinance rezoning all real properties located within the urban suburban area of the Ten Mile Community Historic District and currently zone low-density residential R42 or urban residential UR zoning districts to the special management S3 zoning district with the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Since we like to have discussion in the middle of all these things, I guess I can go ahead and jump in and say I support this, but I just want to make sure people understand they are downzoning their property. So, when you go to sell it and it's less than what it's worth, you wanted it.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes, third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Second reading. Congratulations, Ten Mile. Reading ordinances, 5A, building ordinance provisions, grant-funded improvements to structures. Mr. Boykin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make an amendment to this ordinance. It's a very small one. Under the exception, it said that this would, the building officials authorized the way this requirement proposed work associated with federal, state, and local grant funding sources. I would like to add the additional language and all other projects determined to be a safety hazard.
I'll second that. It was moved by Mr. Boykin, seconded by Mr. Pryor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the amendment passed.
An ordinance amending Chapter Four of the Code of Ordinances, Charleston County entitled Buildings and Building Regulations, and Chapter Eight of the Code of Ordinances, Charleston County entitled Fire Prevention and Protection, as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Numbers, numbers, 5B, Charleston Homes Phase One, 1316 Garrison Street.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1316 Garrison Street totaling approximately .37 acres, parcel ID number 431-02-00-062, to Narrow Gate Development. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, second reading with nine ayes.
5C, Charleston Homes Phase Two, 2017 Bishop Drive.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 2017 Bishop Drive totaling approximately .35 acres, parcel ID number 355-14-00-089 to Charleston Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you, ma'am. Committee recommendations.
Move for approval with the right to amend up to third reading.
Right, historic preservation related fee ordinance, moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Boykin. Mr. Middleton, I'm sorry.
Can give it to Dan.
I want you to grant a call for Mr..
Is there any discussion?
That's a prophecy he will be preaching.
Sorry, it's been moved and seconded. Yeah, okay, a discussion?
Discussion on this issue, I think it's the cart before the horse. I understand that something has to be charged. I'm not sure what the proper amount is, but I don't understand why we vote something before we vote the changes. I just, so I'm not against some legitimate charge, but I would just be against this until after we vote what we're paying a fee on. We haven't voted on what we're charging a fee on, so it's not in the final form yet. We don't know what form that will take. We've heard, we had a public hearing today, we heard uniform opposition, so I still am unsure of the final outcome of what the ordinance will be. So, it's kind of like voting the $75 million to spend on the 526 before you have the referendum. I don't know how we can vote on a fee before we know what the fee's for and what form it's going to pass. So, that would be my opposition to it, not that a fee has to be charged, but it's, we don't have the final form. So, it seems, again, the cart before the horse, and I just, I don't understand it, so I'd have to vote no.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kibrowski, the fee is $25 that's on the table, okay?
We got the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Darby has some concerns. So, to say we vote here tonight and then we put in the cart before the horse is not true, because we got two more readings. I mean, let's be fair, and let's be honest. I mean, if you're just up here to, you know, to make a, an impression or to make a statement, I mean, I mean, we need to move on, let's collaborate together. Now, we just worked with you on an ordinance to make sure it went through. Nobody said, "Well, we putting the cart before the horse." I think that's kind of disingenuous to make that statement. We all are grown men and women up here, and I think we ought to all be treated the same way. But now, I don't disagree. If you want to change, this doesn't change by third reading, you have every right to vote no, just like you have a right to vote now. But to say that we are locked in on a price and it can't be no changes, that's incorrect, sir.
And I thank you for your comments. I did not in any way mean to be disrespectful. My question is, and I believe it's in good faith, that we just had a public hearing on what amendments to make, so we haven't voted on the way and shape that the, on how to vote in those amendments. So, we don't know, in good faith and honesty, I don't know what form the Historic Preservation Commission will be that we're asking for. It's not the $25 that I'm opposed to. I'm not saying that's unreasonable, but the applications, we're voting on a fee for an application process that we haven't voted on to decide. That was my concern, not the fee, not that we're going to have some fee, but in good faith, I'm being respectful. I don't know what we're voting on before we have the final outcome, and then we could deal with the thing.
Sir, if you didn't get it, I'm gonna try to do it in layman's, I'm gonna try to do it in layman's terms. Okay? These people are already protected. But if they want more protection, they have a right to come and petition the county for more protection. So, what the staff is saying, for $25 or whatever the amount is, you have a right to fill out the application to strengthen your protection. Now, that's as basic as I can do it in layman's terms. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a scholar, but.
Can I ask a question? Have we voted on those protections to vote for them yet?
They have those, sir.
But we don't have the final outcome. There's been amendments to that. Am I wrong in that?
These are for existing people now, and they already have these, or existing protections. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's just move on.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Werman?
I mean, I think we kind of have voted on it, and I take your point that I think we are going to be, I mean, certainly, I hope, we're going to be making some amendments to the amendments, but I think it's third, it's coming back on third reading.
Right.
So, so it will come back in, and sort of shortly thereafter. It's kind of already ahead of this track, such that we, you know, might want to have some mechanism for an amendment application to be made. I certainly don't care that it's $25. It can be $1 for all I care, but I think, you know, to the extent this needs to be timed up with it, I would say that I don't think delaying the actual vote now helps, because it kind of needs to get going to time up with the big debate that's going to happen, you know, I guess here in a few weeks either way. So, you know, you know, I don't feel very strongly about the fee itself, but I did just want to clarify that that debate is, you know, we're kind of going to have to unpress the pause button on that, and we're going to have to jump in quick, so.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Moody?
Say, let's have the question. It's going to unequivocally change the landscape of the land we know and love probably, but let's call the question.
All right, let's do it. All in, the request to consider. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Move for committee recommendations, item A through D.
I need to read the ordinance.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
An ordinance amending those portions of Chapter Two, Article Five, Division Two, Section Two, Dash 137, dealing with fees in the zoning and planning department with amendments up to third reading. It's just first reading.
First reading, so there's no roll call on that. Okay, thank you. Number seven, consune agenda.
A through D, move for committee recommendations.
We give it to Boykin.
Seconded by Mr. Boykin. Reverend Middleton, I'm sorry. Mr. Boykin, any, any, any discussion about any of these items?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Listen, Chairman.
Thank you.
On A, I move that we approve, but then we add up to learning, because the information that was given the other night, that was corrected, it was just a matter of him calling and getting a change, and I think staff has verified it. I called the clerk, and she's verified it. So, I would like to add him to this list as well for the funding tonight, and then the Phillips community can review the application, and when it's right, we'll bring it back.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I just, I want to be clear, we're talking about $30,000 now.
Right.
So, there's three entities, so we're only moving $10,000 from council contingency into community development. $30,000?
We're moving $40,000. We're only going to spend 30, and the other 10 will stay in community development pending.
Community investment, I'm sorry.
Community investment, yeah, and pending the Phillips community to get their proper information.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Counsel comments. Mr. Werman?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Pryor?
I was going to say nothing, but I just want to say to my fellow council members, debate is good and information is good. So, please don't feel offended, you know, when someone asks a question or someone debates, because that's what we up here for. You know, Larry's a good friend of mine, and he knows that, and whatever I say, it's not to personally attack you or harm you. So, if you feel that way, I apologize, but I bring you with knowledge I have, or what little I have, to try to make it clear for you.
Mr. Boykin?
I just want to say I'm both proud and happy of our consensus tonight, that we all come together, and thank you all. Thank you.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Mr. Sasse? To the lady out there, I can't remember your name.
Ms. Munn. I was gonna think Ms. Munn.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for coming out. You sat there, you, you know, you had the right spirit, and thank anybody for coming in the right spirit.
Right.
And I thank y'all for listening and working together. We aren't going to get anywhere in this circle tail light thing.
Thank you, Ms. Munn.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
I was going to say that. Ms. Munn, I had your name written down, and I wanted to tell you that if I have missed an email that you had asked me about, I don't respond to general, just if somebody is providing information, but if you had asked her something for me and I did not respond, I apologize. I try to be very responsive. But I do want to say a couple of things. A lot of times, stuff in the news gets spun up, and we sit up here, as you can see, Ms. Munn, most of the people that had public comments tonight, they're not here anymore. they're not here anymore, they don't get to hear our side of it. This is our time to actually say what we have to the public. Uh, but one thing that keeps coming up, and I got this question from a reporter today, and because of my answer, she's not gonna report what I said, um, but I've been accused apparently of representing developers in my legal capacity as an attorney, and I just want to be clear, I actually represent small business owners who get sued by developers. Yeah, and so it, you know, I, I'm not gonna apologize for, you know, what I do for a living, and certainly developers deserve representation too, but the mischaracterizations and in trying to impugn people's reputations because of the positions they take up here is really inappropriate, and it's really the reason that people, good people, don't want to be in public office, because this can be really thankless, especially when we hear folks get up from various trade organizations who constantly combat us with misinformation, and we're not allowed to speak back, and so. Well, and we try to respect the public process and allow the public to, to say their piece without feeling like they're not being heard by us, but I just wanted to.
That's what's happening, that we don't feel, we don't feel like we get the information. Because then you gotta read Tom, Dick, and Harry, write a damn article about something that might not be true.
Well, and I try to be. I try to be very, um, open with media requests and answer any questions when anybody calls me, um, but, you know, I am gonna defend myself and my reputation, and every time, you know, 526 is somehow brought up in a conversation that it has nothing to do with, um, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight back on that stuff. And so, quite frankly, just on that point, we didn't spend seventy-five million, we didn't have, we did have it, and the, the Court of Appeals ruled with us. Okay? And that two thousand sixteen money will go toward 526, so we weren't borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. We had that money and it was spent appropriately, thank you.
This is my last, I promise you. This goes, this goes to Ms. Hamm. Oh, he gave, but he gave it to me, the chairman gave it back to me.
Gave it to him.
Since, since we won that appeal, are we going to be suing for attorney's fees? Because I wish this, this body would direct you to sue for attorney's fees because we won. And the only way you're gonna stop these frivolous lawsuits is to go hit them in the pocket when they lose, make them pay for our attorney fees. So I would like for, you know, you to get something together for us, and if they, if it's not in the original, then I'd like to have them pay our attorney fees, because I'd like to know that amount what we paid too to have, to be represented by the attorneys. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Pryor. Reverend Milton?
Chair, and certainly I know everybody is ready to go, but I do have a couple of things that I would like to say at a very productive meeting with Mr. Smalls, Evans, um, Ms., uh.
Melosek?
Bernie Green and Gerstein relative to the Climate Action Plan. And I wanted to say just generally that the Climate Action Plan, we have the binder with us tonight, is incremental and incentive based. I wanted to add that it is congruent with our strategic plan and is an overarching strategy under the infrastructure pillar. All actions contained are research and evidence based. Some actions are policy oriented, some actions are pragmatic, some actions are educational. I also wanted to, um, say just generally on the federal government level, the EPA has given every state money to develop a climate action plan. South Carolina is one of the states that has received federal funds, and South Carolina itself is developing a climate action plan. The BCD cog, Charleston will get roughly three hundred, uh, the BCD cog is incentivizing this type of activity as well, and Charleston County will get roughly three hundred thousand dollars of one million dollars allotted to our tri-counties to support, support climate action planning and implementation of sustainable actions. Tonight, I am very encouraged by this and certainly by this collegiality that we're sharing on this, um, council tonight, and my recommendation would be for each council member to meet with staff. I've seen the emails go out, uh, Kristen Werster has been petitioning, to receive updates, give input, and ask questions about the plan. Uh, this plan is definitely, um, an economic covenant also for us, because it enables us to, um, to compete for funds that enables that work to continue. I also wanted to add about the energy element. The energy element has been a part of the comprehensive plan since two thousand and ten. Many of you who have been long timers, you all voted on that and passed it along and, and continued to allow it to go forward. I agree that there are some components of this element and language that must be updated, but we can work together to update that language without gutting, uh, the, the very, um, basis and foundation of our contemplated climate action plan. So I wanted to at least put that on the table tonight. We have these binders, and I know sometimes, um, we'll take the binder, we'll put it, put it in the trunk. We may not even look at it or read it. I really, this is so important, and I'm taking time to say that tonight, and I would, I would like to work with every, we, we've come a long way on this from two thousand and twenty-one, since we adopted the Climate Action Resolution through now, you know, the fruition and almost realization. I really want us to not make this a political thing, but make it a, a practical thing to move Charleston County forward and find ways, and I know we can do it, to legitimize the work that has already occurred without boiling it down to, uh, turning lawnmowers into, you know, whatever, and using solar, none of that has anything to do with the conversation if we read the plan. There are fifty-three actionable, um, moves and items that can, uh, actually take place. There may be labeled big moves, but don't be, don't let that big move title frighten you. Let's meet with staff. I would love to talk with everybody, and I will be calling everyone over these two weeks before this comes back. Well, this is gonna come before us next week, I believe, but before we come back with the components that we deferred, please, 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 let's be open to that conversation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kabrowski, you're next.
I wanted to, um, no, Mr. Moody.
No, it's Mr. Kabrowski?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Moody's glass, glass today.
I want to thank, I thought we accomplished a lot, and I particularly want to thank Reverend Middleton for, uh, the spirit of compromise, and we were able to reach a consensus, and we saw today, uh, representative government working. We had a public hearing, we had people come speak passionately about what they cared most about, protecting their land and the traditions of their families, and I thought that's what we do best, and we preserved that right tonight about the trees and the landscape and canopy of Charleston County, so I'm honored to be a part of that, and I thank each and every one that voted in that matter to come to a consensus. I thought we achieved something important and preserved the right of the people to be heard, and that's consistent with what America's about and what, um, Councilman Darby said about what's best about America, and we saw a little bit about that tonight, so thank each and every one of you.
Mr. Darby?
Well, now. Uh, just a few things I will be succinct. Firstly, I'd like to, I really applaud Mr. Kabrowski, uh, in terms of what he's trying to do for the poor areas, because, uh, often they have been at a disadvantage, and, um, he's really fighting for it, uh, his constituents, and I understand how that goes, so I'm very appreciative of your leadership. Secondly, I also like to applaud, um, the chairman, uh, your, your patience, sir, in terms of how you run council. Thank you so very much, because others perhaps would have knocked the gavel a long time ago, so I do appreciate your leadership there. Number, uh, three, uh, this may be a, a wish, but hopefully there's a committee of sorts that can make the comp plan somewhat simplistic so that laypersons could understand. I, I, I mean, I have a little bit of education, but I, I, I can't comprehend all that. I, I need something, I mean, I mean, let's put it in ABC forms, I can understand. And, and fourthly, I don't want Mr. Tooten to bless me out tomorrow, but I'm gonna open up a can of worms. I would like, uh, for those officers who work for the sheriff, those who make less than one hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, how they compare with the surrounding areas, um, because, you know, they put their lives on the line, and I think every now and then, we need to event some concern. So again, I, I hope it's not a can of worm, but I, I do think when you're looking at, because those who a hundred thousand dollars above, they, they are doing well, so I'm just, just don't want to look at it as a comparison.
Councilman Sheriff can pay them whatever she wants.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's not our call, that's her call.
Yes, sir, but I just want to see, sir, in terms of, unless, I mean, for you to procure the information for me, that's something I need to contact the sheriff or something that you would do for me, sir? All right, thank you, sir.
You finished, Mr. Darby?
I'm through, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. SASS. Um, I've been kind of quiet lately, but.
Sir?
I'm not gonna be succinct tonight. I, first of all, I want a positive note, I want to thank our staff, Mr. Tooten, for the, the five public meetings we had for the half-cent sales tax. Lot of energy, lot of effort went into that. I was, I was frankly a little disappointed in the, in the attendance. Sometimes it seemed like council members and staff members and vendors and, you know, some of the same folks that waved the post and courier up there and tell us a reliable source, they were there too. So I, I just, I don't know how well we dug into the, get the real public comments we were after. So that's what I'm a little concerned about. But I did want to thank this council for unanimously, unanimously passing the tree ordinance, taking the BZA out of the process. And I support the amendment. You know, whenever I talk to a constituent who thoughtfully took the time to call me or sent me a genuine email instead of these canned emails we get from the same people that waved the post and courier as a responsible media source, um, their response was always to me, that doesn't make sense. That's gotta change. They didn't email that to me when they sent their blast email out telling me to blast you, well, surprise, surprise. So this change has nothing to do with the county clear cutting, we're not going to do that, everybody knows that. This is what, this is, those that are opposed to this, in my opinion, a lot of the advocacy groups are, are about control. So let me, let me take you back, if you recall, city of Charleston used to have, city council used to have a rule where if their planning commissioner made a recommendation, two-thirds or a super majority of city council had to vote to overturn an unelected body's recommendation. And when, when the city council decided, it was five or ten years ago, to change that, these same groups went nuts, nuts, screaming, laying in the aisle, rolling around, same thing they're doing here, be, because their buddies were all on the planning commission, and they were ruling and making rulings the way they wanted them to. So when city council took that power back from the unelected people, they went crazy. That's what's happened here. That's all that's happened here. These folks have gotten really good at bullying and push around our, our boards and commissions. Or if the people we appoint didn't sign up for that, they're just trying to do a good job. And these groups come in, bully them, harass them, and, you know, look at the, look at the motion we sent back to the planning commission. We basically told them what we were gonna approve, and they set it aside, and somebody walked up and put a motion on their desk, an advocacy group, and they said, boy, this looks good, let's send this back to council. I mean, give me a break. That's, that's, that's not good, but, you know, by taking this decision-making from an unelected board to the elected board, our unelected board may or may not be people who are experts, they may or may not, they're probably buddies of ours and maybe have some, you know, they're quoted as being the experts. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't, but we're the ones that are accountable. And they say you're gonna take the public out of it, that's nonsense. Well, we added a, an aspect back of it tonight, it had plenty before, in my opinion, but you're gonna take the accountability out of it? We're all accountable. You don't like it, throw us out. That's where it stops. So the days of having an unelected board approve or disapprove whatever of this elected board, I mean, that's, that's wacko, and I'm glad we fixed it. I'm glad we fixed it unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tooten? You spoke up already today, which is unusual, but thank you, it was, it was well, well timed and, and very well. Ms. Hamm? Thank you. I'd like to say, um, I'm really relieved and happy that we came up with this decision tonight.